I now call the AcuMat County School Board meeting to order that all say any trespassing instances in flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Powell.
Here.
President.
President.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
White.
Alright. First item on the agenda is public comment. Reese, did you read the rules of public comment?
Identify yourself by name and non-tyrant address. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Individuals may not reserve or otherwise transfer their time to another speaker. Specific personnel matters must not be initiated at the public meeting. Speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or use profanity. Specify the nature of your remarks. Speakers who have previously spoken on a subject for public comment shall not be allowed to readdress the board during the same public comment period. Specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or the appropriate staff member. Anyone who would like to present a PowerPoint presentation for public comment has to present the presentation 24 hours in advance. For review by the staff or approvence, all questions shall be directed to the chairman, who will, at his discretion, solicit the response from the appropriate staff member.
Alright, our very first person is Miss Denise Privilege.
Mister Chairman, AcuMat County School Board, Mr. Powell. My name is Denise Framlin, I live in 29490 Chesapeake, in Templesville. I'm a school bus driver for AcuMat County, I drive bus 65. I have a letter from a family, from one of my children, and I'm gonna read it verbatim. To whom it may concern, my wife, Myrna Rantz, has called the sheriff's office multiple times concerning the fact that vehicles are not having time to stop on both sides of the highway. When our granddaughter gets on or off the bus, we live at 7363 Langford Highway in Oak House. Normally, it's the cars going south that have the most issues. Recently, one car, while Mia was getting off the bus, had to jump to the center lane to avoid the cars. That really upset her father and the bus driver. The speed limit while school is in should be 35 miles per hour at T's Corner to Arcadia High School. There have been three deaths in the past two years at this intersection. A car not stopping happens almost every day. And that's from the Rantz family. And I'll just quickly go over mine. I've been a driver for AcuMat County since the fall of 2017. My regular route for Cagatank, I have 18 stops. Ten of those stops are on thoroughfares that are 45 to 55 miles an hour. We are constantly having issues with people going through our red lights. With approval from Mr. Powell, I contacted the AcuMat County Sheriff's Office and Corporal, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Mulligan and Corporal Hennessy, Henny, I'm sorry, were both very helpful in providing us the help. They were only available to ride with me for one day, and it was kinda funny because it was like they had a rolling blockade behind me because everybody knew where the unmarked car was. But, that very afternoon, when I stopped at the Rantz family home, which is right there across from Withams, a tractor trailer went by us, and it was going so fast that it rocked my whole bus while Mia was getting off the bus. My grandparents, my parents, brothers and sisters come out to the road to get their brothers and sisters. That's required of elementary school children. And when they stand out there and they have to hold their breath because these cars are going past us, we need your help desperately.
Thank you very much, and we will follow it. Alright, it's Connie Burford.
Good evening, Connie Burford, our senior membership. I would just like to address once again the playground issue that continues to plague the elementary schools. I don't know whose idea it was to destroy all the playgrounds at the same time without having all of the equipment ready to put back in the ground. But it was a very, very terrible decision. And I think that you all should take the time to go out and visit these playgrounds and see what's going on and see what's happening to these kids that are having to have inside recess all the time. Especially when we've got this wonderful weather. She's shouting, "They're fanning herself because she's agreed." With this wonderful weather that we've been having this early, it looks like early spring. And I really do think that you all should do something about that. Find out where the equipment is, do whatever you can do. Thank you.
No matter how strong, but take a look and see what we're being doing. Next, it's John Robinson.
My name's John Robinson, 523570, working for Green Bush Bus, job rank trainer for AcuMat County. And I know what she's talking about. I've taken my bus several times, going over to state farms and parking over there, waiting till the other bus comes down and collects and make sure, put my red light on, stop traffic going by, whereas painting my eyes on the road. It's happened quite a bit, I stopped doing it. I just stopped doing it because we notified the state troopers and stuff that said they gonna take care of it, but we still have that problem. And sooner or later, something's gonna happen. We've had cars go by and they realize that, then they're screaming at tars, cars sliding sideways down here by Purdue. Something really needs to be done. And another issue, discipline on our buses. I feel as though we need to change some of our rules because when a kid gets in sixth grade and he don't know how to ride a school bus, they don't need to eat his hand padded. But, he needs to be off the bus. You know, we give him referrals saying, you know, okay, just yesterday morning, he's been on the bus five, six years. If this is in the sixth grade, he's probably been on the bus seven years, if he went through kindergarten. And if he don't know how to ride a bus by then, we need to make these parents a little accountable, let them know that we can't do this. And I'll tell you why. Coming from Vader last week, St. T. Elementary, that brought NASA place, the United States 405. Soon as I come around that 405, there was a car at my length, fine. If I had been busting with a kid at that time, looking in the mirror, guess what would've happened? So we need to really control, get our discipline on these buses controlled. Drivers have enough pressure trying to drive their bus and everybody else is being there looking in that mirror. And the friend says, if you take your eye off that road for one second, anything can happen. They go over that 329 window, out every 300 inches, 29, you have one fatality. So we don't need to get, try not to get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robinson. Mr. Chairman, the country has noted that. Alright, next is Siney Shay.
Shani Shay.
Shay.
I'm a 7459, Home Street Road, and I drive bus 22 going down Saxus Road. I'm on the opposite side, which is the Bayside, and there's not a lot of traffic, but when it is, it too is a lot of speeding cars. We've got, especially in the morning, there's wardmen, and they won't pass the bus. And this morning, just this morning, I had my yellow lights on and then cut the red light on and a car passed me. I don't, like I said, there's not a lot of traffic, but when there is, they won't pass you. They don't, they have problems with the bus. I used to not be a bus driver, and I felt the same way. I was like, oh, it's a bus, I'm gonna pass them. But now that I am a bus driver and I know the security reasons of a bus driver and the safety of the kids, yes, they may be standing on one side, but they can also cross over. And one child that I pick up is on a curve, and I'm scared every morning because these cars wanna come up and pass and go around. So I do have a letter that I wanna read. It is a great concern that I am writing this letter on behalf of parents, students, and our bus drivers in regards to vehicles not properly yielding to the buses that transport our children to and from school. It has been noted that some vehicles on Route 13, Route 175 of St. T. Road, as well as other routes, continue to drive even though the buses have signal and stop sign. Some vehicles are going so fast that they couldn't slow down if they wanted to. As concerned parents, I am asking the board to place more signs along these routes specifying that these are areas in which children are being transported by bus, as well as imposing any sanctions that are fitting for those that don't adhere to the signals. Miss Denise Framlin, my son's bus driver, has expressed numerous times her frustrations with traffic not yielding when she has dropped students on and off the bus. I have personally witnessed her plugging cars down to stop so that our children are safe. She does a great job in doing this and generally cares about the children. Thank you for hearing this matter and looking forward to an even greater resolution. Respectfully submitted, Renee Hinman. Another question that I have is, children when they're on the bus, I know that we have rules on the bus, the cell phones. When they have cell phones and devices on the bus, especially in the morning when it's dark, it's light. And when I look in that mirror and I'm paying attention to what they have, and I do take my eyes off the road to see what's going on, so that is another concern for mine. I don't know if it's our job to say, you know, take the devices, put them away. Do we have that authority to say, take everything off, don't turn anything on? If we do, please let them know. And I'll let the students know, no devices in the mornings, but it's dark and it's taking my eyes off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do appreciate all of you coming and expressing your concern, but we will be following up and will be consulted whether or not we need to buy cameras on the arms of the cell phone, cell phone of the bus, we will follow. Thank you very much.
Mister Chairman.
I just wanna say, I was on the bus, Mr. John was driving, moving big up on 75. His quick reaction, I believe, saved their lives. That car was coming right straight for us. And I thank you for that, I thank you then, I thank you again.
That's fucked up.
Next item on the agenda.
What's your favorite girl from that time on the list?
Okay, I've got everybody.
Okay, let me just make me a little bit.
Okay, I'll get it. Next item on the agenda is approval of events. Are there any questions on events? Alright, unanimous, the same with the glad events approved. I have 4.01 on the vendors. Any questions on the vendors? Any unanimous, the same with the glad vendors approved. I have 5.01, swim team.
Yes, I would like to introduce Mister Carter. Mr. Elliott here, Andre Elliott here.
Good evening, state board members, all the guests who are gathered together, I gather this evening, want to thank you so much for the opportunity just to briefly present an award and recognize the shore, the eastern shore, the AcuMat County Shore Swim Team. Called the Shore Swim Team because it's a conglomerate of all of the schools who decided to participate in the activity, the sport of swim, sponsored by the Virginia High School League. And it's an honor to be a part of this activity because not all schools, not all school districts have swimming facilities in their areas, schools don't participate. You see here, the Shore Swim Team of AcuMat County Public Schools is a district-wide effort to offer swimming as a VHSL varsity sport. A district swim squad allows participation by all high schools in the county, sharing resources, competition, and coaching efforts. And so we're gonna take an opportunity just to thank all those who are a part of this effort. Currently, two high schools participate in this regional effort, Arcadia High School, you know what, that's wrong, forgive me, I'm bad, Arcadia High School, and Nandua High School, not St. T. High School. So I apologize, Lawrence, you can give me tomorrow's school, I apologize. It is our hope that all three high schools will be represented with students at one of the boys' and girls' squads for the next year. We figure, you know, we're of the water, we're by the water, we're in the water, we need to promote water as one of our sports and our activities. Ultimately, if participation is consistent, each school can enjoy its own swim team. We want, we have some special thank yous tonight, Coach Luke Brinkley can't be here with us, he's the athletic director for Nandua High School, he's been instrumental in just making sure that all of the logistics are taken care of with Shore Swim alongside Coach Alan Hall, who's the athletic director for Arcadia High School. I've heard we have the conversations, everything from hotel rooms, logistics, to when do we swim, where are we going, so they're very much instrumental in making sure all of the backdrop that we don't see takes place for our swimmers. We definitely wanted to recognize Coach Katherine Bentley and Coach Mackenzie Lucas for all they have done to coach our team. So I'm asking you to come forward at this time, Coach Katherine Bentley and Coach Mackenzie Lucas, if you could come forward.
On behalf of AcuMat County Public Schools, Nandua High School and Arcadia High School, we present certificates of coaching excellence. This certificate of achievement is presented to Coach Mackenzie Lucy and Coach Katherine Bentley for excellence in coaching, mentoring, and professionalism in the area of girls' swim and boys' swim for the Shore Swim Team of AcuMat County Public Schools, signed by Dion Garner, Principal at Nandua High School, and Sean O'Shea, Principal of Arcadia High School, February 21st, 2023. So we thank you so much for your support and your dedication. Thank you so much. We also want to say thank you to Mister Andre Elliott and Miss, I apologize, you all have to forgive me, that's Miss Tasha Lucy, for their unwavering support of, to AcuMat County Public Schools, their commitment to students, and their dedication to the sport of swim. If I can just kinda say this off the record or off script, I have been to three competitions, or two competitions, and one kind of fun activity at the YMCA, and the way the teams are welcomed into the Y is just unbelievable. It's not like we have a swim, swimming pool at one of the high schools, at one of our AcuMat County Public Schools facilities. They welcome us, they invite us in, the welcome is always warm, the room is always warm, but we're just thankful that we have such community members who care much about our students and what they do. So at this time, I'm gonna ask if Miss Tasha Lucy can come forward, please.
So on behalf of AcuMat County Public Schools, we present the certificate of appreciation to the Eastern Shore Family YMCA, that says, the certificate of appreciation is presented for your unwavering support to AcuMat County Public Schools, commitment to students, and dedication to the sport of swim, representing the Shore Swim Team of AcuMat County Public Schools, signed by Dion Garner, Principal at Nandua High School, Sean O'Shea, Principal at Arcadia High School, dated February 21st, 2023. And we just ask you to put it on display so we can see everything you have done. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you for the two pictures you've taken, you just have a couple of pictures. If you're interested in getting more pictures or photo, real photos, please let me know, I'll be more than happy to send them to you. I didn't want to overwhelm the bombard of presentation. Here, we just have a couple of pictures from our senior night event, we see one of our seniors in the middle, Connor Lee in the middle, the team taking their shot there off to the side, and we go to that last slide, and we just see some swimmers in action. And if you have an opportunity during the next season, please, man, please start taking the opportunity to go and support the swimmers and see the work that they do, because it's great work and it's a great equalizer. There are students who are not football players, who are not basketball players, who are not track runners, but they excel in the pool. And the great thing about it is, we do have football players, and we do have track runners that also excel in the pool. So I think it's just a great way to bring everyone together. So the last thing I'd like to do, and forgive me for being quick, I'm gonna be respectful of time, swimmers, we have a number of swimmers from Nandua High School and two swimmers from Arcadia High School. So at this time, as I call you up, and I'm gonna ask certificates of all of them, alright? And we want to recognize the fact that this past weekend, our swim team competed in the state tournament in Christiansburg this past weekend, having a number of high placings, groups, teams, and overall, so we wanted to congratulate them on a job well done in representing the eastern shore. Let's get them like. Alright, here we go, we have Roy Reed. Then it's Alcun Cifuentes. Christina Samuel. Grace Bentley. We will present her with the certificate before being team manager, she was right there with it, it didn't work. Yes. So if you don't mind, everyone, I'll step back, please, we have swimmers around. Thank you all so much, you may have your seats, and thank you all for allowing us to be in the honor of tonight. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, I think it would be appropriate that Congress Williams, if one of them could just very briefly describe for us what this experience has been like.
I'm the only 18-year-old, so they all decided to send me up here. So, it's been, it's been a lot of fun. I don't really know exactly how to describe it. This is my first year doing swim. I didn't do swims, aqua year, freshman year, or junior year. But, meeting everyone has been an amazing experience, getting to know all these people. I knew some of them from cross, I knew some of them from track, knew some of them because I had classes with them. But, it's different when everyone is on the same playing field. A lot of them were new this year too. Some of them are better than me, it's fine. You know, it's, it's great. And of course, our coaches, amazing, Tasha is amazing, Tasha is my boss. I'm getting round points with my boss. No, I'm just saying. But, yeah, it's, I don't really exactly know what to say.
Hello, everyone, my name is Sierra. This year was my first year on the team. I joined the team not knowing how to swim, but they so graciously taught me. I didn't think I'd ever. I didn't think I'd get a chance this season to swim in an actual meet. I didn't, but that's okay. I did have the opportunity to swim a 25 at our, one of our meets that wasn't official, but I'm glad that I still got the opportunity. Joining a team is a new experience, it's kinda scary, but it was fun, we had a lot of fun, and it was such a pleasure to be with them every evening for a period of time. They've all been so nice and so kind to me, and I'm really thankful for that, guys. Every single one of you have been so encouraging to me, a lot of times in the locker room, when I thought I'd never get it, I'd hear Jordan, I'd hear Kayla, I'd hear Grace, Christina, Oliver, Emma, them all cheering me on and giving me support when I didn't think I could do it. I wanna again thank Coach Bentley, because it's been really hard, and I knew that I was getting on her nerves sometimes. But, it's been really, really fun, I'm looking forward to next season. Thank you.
We want to thank you and congratulate you on what you've been doing. We're fortunate enough for Mister Reese, the Superintendent Howard, we were able to attend one of your meets, and we were very impressed with what we saw and how y'all all worked together. So, we are asking that you continue doing what you're doing, and thank you leaders for leading you in the direction you're going. Thank you.
Haven't seen you all in a long time. Good evening, state board again, today is February 20th, 2023.
Good evening, esteemed board again. Uh, today is February twentieth, two thousand twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, want to thank you all for the opportunity to present on behalf of our school safety audit committee. Um, we'll be kind of laying through the first couple of slides. Those ones keep popping up. I don't know why. So forgive me with that. But this is kind of an overview of the purpose of our school safety audit committee. This just lets us know why we're here and what it is that we're trying to do. We did review this during our last opportunity to present. And so this one thing, the two things that I really want to stay to kind of focus on here is the third bullet that says creating information pipeline between the superintendent and the board. I think it's very important when it comes down to having schools that are under your tenure, making sure that they are safe and secure so that students can learn, that parents feel comfortable with sending their students to school on the bus, at the bus stop, in the school building, after school activities. And so having that information pipeline between the nine of you and Mr. Holland is going to be extremely important for us. And then finally, we meet the managers of the BDOE because in my various, in my other, uh, assignments in other districts, there was not a school safety committee like this. Uh, we didn't hear of the reports, we didn't hear of the opportunities to talk about school safety and how it impacts what we do every day in terms of teaching and learning. So we thank you all so much for this opportunity. Next slide. Again, we have the members of the Acuama County, uh, Acuama County School Board Safety Audit Committee. This is kind of letting you know where we are. We are still making an elementary representative and a parent representative. So between now and March, we are going to look really hard to find someone to fill those two slots because it's important for us to have that parent perspective and the elementary school perspective, especially now that we are really doing walkthroughs of the buildings and we're getting input from all levels in terms of how our buildings are structured and what we need to do to make sure we're secure. So here's the new stuff. Refining our work. Uh, the first thing is we're going to continue to explore the various levels of safety. Uh, we often think of safety precautions as being how do we guard against external threats? How do we secure our buildings? How do we keep it from the outside coming in? But recent history, we'll get to that momentarily, has taught us that we have to really look at the internal threats. What happens when something happens on the inside of the building? And so we're doing really good work in examining safety from both perspectives. How do we secure the buildings? How do we make sure intruders are not coming into our buildings? But make sure that those who do enter our buildings legitimately are indeed doing what they're supposed to do and they're remaining safe. The second thing that we've been doing in terms of refining our work is watching trends. What's going on nationally? How does it impact Acuama County Public Schools? Because unfortunately, we have this copycat phenomenon. When something happens in California, it's going to happen in Arizona. When it happens there, it'll happen in Louisiana. When it happens there, it'll happen in Tennessee. And from Tennessee to New York, New York to Massachusetts, Massachusetts to West Virginia, and then we're home. And so we have to watch what's going on so we can be prepared. Proactivity is the best form of defense. Number three, we have a commitment to being solution focused. And our last meeting was a very productive meeting. And we actually went over time, if memory serves me correctly, and we just talked about all the things that we had to talk about and we came with ideas and some possible solutions to those areas of concern. So that's what we're doing, not just kind of talking about safety. We're talking about things that we are facing as a community and facing as a community of schools here on the Eastern Shore. The fourth bullet there says we're going to maintain a two-way communication between the superintendent and the committee. Mr. Holland talks to us, we talk to Mr. Holland. We tell him what we find, he tells us what we need to look for. And we go back and forth to ensure that we're meeting those needs. And the last thing is that we're creating those protocols and procedures that are specific to Acuama County Public Schools and even more specific to the individual schools. We can talk about what they're doing nationally. We can talk about what happens across the bay or up in Maryland. Or what's going to keep us safe here on the shore in Acuama County. That's the key. And then we look at what's going to happen in each of our eleven schools. To include tangential combined schools, we cannot leave them out because we want to ensure that all levels of safety and school security are in place. Quickly, I know this has been a very hot topic, uh, the Newport News Public Schools Elementary School shooting. And we spent time talking about this because we have a number of elementary schools in our district. So it's worth conversation. Let me give you some context. I live in Newport News, Virginia. This school is nine point two miles from my house. That's the same distance between where we are right now and Nandua High School. That's it. It's, it's not that far away. From Nandua High School is ninety-six point eight miles from that school to that elementary school, Rich, Rich Neck Elementary School. That's an hour and a half if you're going sixty. If you drive like me, an hour and twenty minutes. But when you look at that, it's fifty mile, when we travel thirteen, uh, south going toward the bridge, this, I do it every day. Fif, of that trip, fifty miles of this eastern shore in the bridge, right? Twenty miles of the bridge. That means seventy miles of that ninety-six miles is eastern shore. When we get to North Hampton Boulevard, we only have seventeen more miles of where at that school. So the point is, it's close and it, 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 it's worth our time and attention to look at that and to see what's happening in that school so we can prevent it in our schools. Look at the second bullet. Here are the shoppers. It was an elementary school student. We tend to think guns, knives, weapons happened internally, happened at the high school level. It was an internal threat. We talk a lot about the external threats. So we spend time talking about the internal threats and what we can do to keep our schools safe. Administrators were made aware of the situation. So what are we going to do? We have to listen to our front lines, our teachers. We must give them the credit for being the educators that they are. And we have to listen to when they say there's a threat and we don't take any, we don't, we'd rather be wrong than be really wrong, if you understand what I mean. And then the broader investigation uncovered security concerns district-wide in Newport News. And so we're looking at these shoppers to kind of figure out, bullet number three, what does this mean for us here in Acuama County? Remember, we're observing the trends. So we see what's happening right so close to home. We use this scenario to benefit ourselves, not to, not to revel in their losses, but the fact that, you know, we have to look at other mistakes that we don't make and then we try to make our corrections now before they're caused. So what have we accomplished so far? Concretely, we have walkthroughs of all the Acuama County Public Schools to include tangential combined schools. They're in progress to observe soft spots and make safety recommendations. These walkthroughs are being done by our Acuama County Sheriff's Department. So we kind of have, we have an external partner. And they're doing alongside Mr. Bennett, alongside Ms. Jordan, and they're walking to kind of see more of the areas that we need to address. Then we use those areas to each school to figure out what are the commonalities in the, in the errors in those areas and rule recommendations. And a final report will be submitted upon completion. The second item is a deep special metal detectors. That's where we are. Both walkthrough and handheld for all of our schools. Mr. Holland has initiated the survey to determine the status of each school and we're looking at that survey and we'll see recommendations in the next slide of what we'd like to do. Oh, go back, Ms. Smith, I'm sorry. Uh, bullet number three, continued discussion of visitor entry management systems. We want to make sure there are cameras that are readily available, that where the secretary or the front office can see the visitors coming in. We can look at those paths without having unnecessary traffic in our buildings. And look at that, look at that at some point. There's a focus on the alternative and we connect tracks because there are, there are no current issues, but there are no visitor or entry management systems. You go to the door and you knock on the door. And anyone can knock on that door, you look up a little window pane and that could be it. Not to speak morbidly, but we have to be proactive and not reactive. We don't want to wait till someone is hurt and ordered to act. And the final bullet of kind of what we've accomplished so far is high schools and middle schools will incorporate an emergency action care plan for after hours sporting events that take place on the fields and in the gymnasium. And that will be a part of our crisis management plan, what's going to happen when we're outside of the track, when we have hundreds of people at the football game, what's going to happen in the gymnasium, how do we respond to those emergencies? And this is the requirement by the Virginia High School League. And again, I must say credit where it's due, not just because he's mine, excuse me, but, uh, uh, Coach Luke Brinkley, James Brinkley is the one who made us aware of that. Nandua High School has one because BSL requires all middle and high schools to have this action care plan in place. And so because of that, it's not, I got you. It's not going to other schools under the bus. It's okay. We have one school, we use it as a model and everyone will follow suit. And then our recommendation by July one, everyone will have this in place in their crisis management plan. That right. And the fifth thing that we have accomplished so far, we give credit to Dr. Lisa Johnson for this. We had a serious team discussion of emotional safety at our last meeting. She asked about that. So we took some time to really discuss that and what does that mean for us? And so some things that we're looking at is we, we know we're going to have continued support from our Acuama County Public Schools Mental Health Counselors. That's number one. Number two, there should be ongoing training, a training should be provided to the faculty and staff on a regular basis to help them meet students' needs. That's going to help with classroom management overall. But then more specifically, what happens when there are events? How do teachers respond? Because in the moment, the teacher is the one that students rely on. So how do we make sure that teachers are prepared to handle not just the threat itself, but the emotional wellbeing of students? And then letter C, Nurse Tanya Martin indicates that there's an influx of youth in the hospital with very severe mental health concerns. How does that impact what we do in the school buildings? So these are all things we'll have continuous conversations about and of course, making recommendations to support them. Here are the formal recommendations that I'm, then, then we're done, or then I'm done. Of the official recommendations the superintendent and the school board are, number one, we recommend that all Acuama County Public Schools students should have a label with an ID badge. Sounds generic, but it doesn't happen. It, it must be worn at all times on school grounds, school buses, field trips, et cetera. And, and we're working on and we've been in conversation with Ms. Smith, Vanessa Smith, or if we haven't, we will be, in terms of principles, to update the pictures that are in Power School so that there are current pictures to make sure that when I look at Johnny Brown, it's not the third grade picture, but the tenth grade picture. No, no, no. Number two, vape sensors should be installed in the bathrooms. Reduce playing encounters in the bathrooms to evade and participate in inappropriate activity. We think that's an important thing. We, I know that it was looked at at some point, but as a committee, we thought that would be a great way to just keep that unnecessary traffic out of the bathrooms and people can use the bathroom for what they're intended. Number three, all metal detectors should be replaced due to functionality and age. There should be a metal detector at every entrance of every school. Now, schools that have metal detectors, that's not what we're saying. We're saying that wherever there's a door, in a large doorway, may have three individual doors. There should be a detector at each door, not just one of that entryway. Because i- in essence, you're only getting one-third of the people who are being scanned. And so that's two-thirds of the people who have something on them that should happen. And so that's what we would like to, uh, recommend for every school. That's going to take finance, of course, it'll take time and more, more investigation and research, but we feel that's going to be a great way to reduce just the, it'll be a deterrent to keep people from bringing, keep people from bringing things in and they should not bring in. And then finally, number four, we ask to give approval for the development of a policy by the Acuama County Public Schools, uh, Safety, uh, Safety Health Advisory Board and the School Safety Advisory Team for the Acuama County Public Schools nurses, administrators to be educated and trained to administer Narcan, now Narcan. Narcan. And, and that came up as a result with the influx and the increase of fentanyl and other very dangerous drugs that if anyone comes in contact with that, we need to be able to give that, uh, we have the permission to give that. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of political blowback, but Nurse Martin, she says very, she stands very strongly and firmly about this recommendation. So we'll have some more details about that coming up soon. So that's the official presentation. Now, we may have some members who may want to speak. We just have them listed in our PowerPoint. So I'll just call, if Mr. Bennett, if it is good.
All right, Mr. Smith. Real quick, one thing I'm doing at this point is investigating different metal detectors. So we'll have something great to both finance and to the board. Uh, like the President Garner said, we're looking to do this at all the doors and metal detectors have changed a whole lot from the current ones we have in place. So they're a lot more sophisticated, a lot more mobile, a lot easier to use because no longer do you have to pull up a plugman if they're on batteries, twelve to fourteen hour battery life and pre-chargeable batteries last about five years. So that's what I'm working on right now.
Ladies and gentlemen, just real quick, we did order some wands for our elementary schools and we would only wanted those to be approved also for tonight. We didn't start with a metal detector with the elementary, but wand. And I believe the two, um, our off-site campuses at the mobile units have two wands who are there for them to start and limited them more sooner than for the elementary schools. And pretty much everything else on the PowerPoint was said collectively for all of us as a team.
Uh, I'll be brief as well. We are currently securing the services and hardware to install cameras in the elevators at Arcadia Middle, Nandua High and Nandua Middle. And I am researching the functionality and system capabilities of the various visitor management systems that we had that were available. And once we narrow it down, it comes to a time to bring it to you all for approval. We'll have that in place. Anything else?
Unfortunately, I may not be. A couple of things, uh, we're talking about, things have been going on. And it's ironic, Chris and I picked up the same article today. I read it. It's by, um, School Transportation News. And over the past years, the past four years, they nationwide are, there's been an increase of violence, violent situations involving school buses. And what they noted, I'll re-revise them here. It should be noted that not all violence involves firearms. The most common weapons used in school bus violence are fists, feet, books, pens, pencils, and other school supplies. John mentioned it earlier about what we're seeing on buses and it's been a bad year for that. So what we've told drivers, keep your eyes out, keep your peel, write referrals. If you see something, let us know. Our bus drivers know more about the communities than anybody in this room does. They know, they've been driving them for years. So we've asked them to keep their eyes out for us. Secondly, um, more weapons are now being transported in buses than in cars, private transportation. That's what the national survey is seeing. It seems like if the students feel that they can get away with getting, ask the bus driver, get into the bus, that they can get in the school's issue. So that's something else to be moving. That's all I have on weapons and buses. Um, but other things that we're doing, A and N is working with our drivers, training our drivers. The old ways of seeing power lines being down, electricity and evacuation of buses isn't the same. New things have come up. So each driver is going to be trained on bus evacuation, evacuations for when the power lines come down. The old, oh, you're safe in the car because I got both tires, the power one. No, that's not right. So we're doing all training with, and thank, we're thanking A and N for doing that with us. And we're looking into, Beth and I have discussed, we're looking into cameras since our white fleet is transporting more and more children, specialties, medical conditions. We're looking into cameras in our, our white fleet now just to protect our employees from these situations. Last but not least, Mr. Holland will discuss this later. We have been, Beth and I have had a very extensive discussions with Bus Patrol ongoing forward with, uh, having cameras on buses for patrolling on Route thirteen. Um, and it's, we've, they've talked with, uh, real long game with Matt Anderson from, Mr. Holland will discuss this, uh, where we can go from there. So we're looking for the help of the school world now. And I think that's about all I have when it comes to safety for tonight.
Thank you all so much.
One of the questions I have is regarding the metal detectors, do they stop working if they fail? What's the protocol? Um, do we have somebody that can come fix them or do we have to wait?
So that's part of that new process we were kind of, kind of mentioned, alluded to earlier. Uh, with the updated, um, updated metal detectors, we can both hand them up walkthroughs. We have the service contracts, make sure you have, just like if you have a copying machine or if you have some type of computer device, you have an opportunity to have a service contract where someone comes out to inspect them regularly if there's a malfunction and just have regular upkeep like they should. And then like I said, currently, um, our metal detectors are functioning, they're just older. So that means they're not as sensitive as they should be in terms of people walking through and make sure that everyone who gets through, sometimes they go off and they didn't even know what's going in them. So we want to make sure that that doesn't affect the other way as well, where they don't go off when they should. So in terms of service upkeep, that will be a part of that, that purchasing piece in terms of the contract and having technical support as needed.
One other question, um, so everyone that was up there seemed to be a director. Except is Ms. Jordan not a director or she just?
They're not all directors.
They're not all. Okay. Thank you.
I apologize. I'll correct that. Yes.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Y'all keep up the good work.
If I may share, if I may share, it is a team effort. And I know people say, good job beyond, but it's all of us. If, if I can, Miss Fox, can you help me put this bag over there? I want to take this opportunity because I think we're getting ready to close session soon, but I, I, I need to do this now before I want to have another opportunity. Uh, Nandua High School wants to take a chance to just, just to thank the school board members for your support and your service to the county. And so if you would, we are, we have gifts for you all from Nandua High School. It's just a small gift, just a small token. We just want to say thank you so much. This is school board appreciation month. Am I right? And so we want to mention that we do our due diligence. It's, it's just, I'm, I'm a giver. And so I believe in giving when it's due because many times we take time to give people their flowers when they can't smell them. So we want to take this opportunity to give you a little sympathy. We say thank you and we hope that, you know, it's something that you can enjoy. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much.
I am five point three, uh, my name is.
Good evening. I, uh, sent out my federal programs report and I just want to, uh, say one into it. A lot of the reimbursements are being held up by approval of amendments in the VDOE law. They are, they're backed up. Uh, we just titled one alone has been there for about sixty days and we're having to resort to calling them. So if you see some of these reimbursements that looks like it hasn't been completed in a while, that we can't make the reimbursement unless the amendment goes through. So, um, that's the biggest holdup. I can, you know, go through the list of which titles we're actually waiting for an amendment, but that's the biggest holdup, um, for us for right now. So are there any questions on the federal programs? And then the only other thing I wanted to say is, um, on behalf of Brandon's and Child Nutrition Services, which I'm not sure if he's in here or if he's still cleaning up, uh, they hope that you enjoyed the, uh, School Board Appreciation, uh, reception tonight. And they actually had a, um, administrative review on January eighteenth and I think I, I referred to this earlier and then I gave you the results. So the Virginia Department of Ed's School Nutrition Program conducted an administrative review at the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Child Nutrition Programs, including the at-risk portion of the Child and Adult Care Food Program and the Summer Food Service Program to determine compliance with federal and state regulations. They conducted this work at the main office and at Arcadia Middle School. The areas that they tested were eligibility, meal counting and claiming, menu records, civil rights, resource management, monitoring and training, reporting and record keeping. And out of all those areas, there were no findings. Under meal count, they gave some technical assistance to post the menu in a more prominent location at Arcadia Middle and that was the only comment they had. So I'd like you to join me and congratulate your.
Great. Six point one.
I want to thank Brandon for our reception to the School Board Appreciation. Uh, it was really well done and the latest that came out. Uh, we had a lot of good news, Junior Senior Beta Club, uh, this year, Nationals in Louisville, Kentucky. I'd like for, uh, Katie Farrell and Karen to come up please and explain these points.
Good evening, board members. Ms. Taylor and I are extremely proud of both the junior and senior beta clubs. As you can see with the swim team and, and all of our students, we have some talented students here in Acmet County. We want to thank the sponsors, the students, chaperones and family members for their support for attending the convention and helping out. We're going to begin with Acmet Elementary School and their accomplishments. Winning first place, we have mixed media, quilting and onsite painting. Second place in sculpture, pottery, black and white photography, hand drawn anime, onsite drawing. For both third and fifth place in social studies and language arts. And then for their group awards, we have first place in Song Fest, second place in elementary robotics, second place in 3D art and second place in campaign skit. So congratulations to all the Acmet Elementary Schools. For Shinkatik Elementary School, we have first place in book battle and speech, second place in creative writing. We also have first place in solo, duo and trio. And one of our talented students got an invitation to be a premier performer in Louisville, Kentucky. We also have continuing for Shinkatik, first place in hand drawn anime, jewelry and sculpture. Second place in digital arts, fiber arts and paper quilting. Third place in color photography, drawing, mixed media, pottery, recital arts and woodworking. And in addition, they also got first place in apparel and a convention growth award. So congratulations to the Shinkatik Schools. And last but not least, from our Keggetag Elementary students, they received first place in performing arts in Spanish, second place in woodworking and third place in both speech and book battle. Congratulations to the Keggetag. Alternative to Ms. Taylor for the, uh, senior awards.
So for the middle school, which is also combined as junior beta with the elementary school, I'm going to do those as well as our senior beta. Arcadia Middle School, second place for onsite painting, second place quiz bowl team, first place Spanish, second place for science, first place for woodworking, second place for drawing, the second place for performing arts vocal solo. That's the overall winner for Arcadia Middle for Shinkatik. For Shinkatik Middle School, third place, black and white photography, first place, book battle, second place, sixth grade language arts, second place, painting, third place, vocalist duo performing arts, second place, performing arts small group, first place, pottery, first place, quilting, second place, seventh grade science, first place, speech, second place, spelling bee, second place, club trading pen and two other students were selected as senior premier performers for the national convention. For Nanduwa Middle School, first place in Song Fest and Campaign Skit, first place in onsite drawing, first place in hand drawn anime, first place in sculpture, second place in trading pen, third place for social studies. The Virginia State President is from Nanduwa Middle School and key club award for Ausdandy Club. For High School for the senior beta, which usually follows right after junior beta, they will also get to go to, um, qualifying to Louisville, Kentucky. They try to stagger the times when the students get to go. For Arcadia High School, they took first place in Division One French Competition. They placed second place for math. Advisors and administration is working to put together an article as well as the names and pictures of students to be able to submit to the newspaper and hopefully they will honor all of our kids in the paper as a group for our division. Um, definitely put a mark on the shore for what our students do academically, athletically. And coming up this spring, we have even more competitions with our CTE program.
I apologize, I left one important award off. Um, not only do we have the senior president for Virginia, but at the elementary level, we have the, um, vice president at Acmet Elementary School.
I'd like for the chairman, vice chairman, the board to think about, you have a lot of students getting ready for Louisville and y'all have been very generous on the bus transportation. And we don't know exactly figured on how many of them and I would like the board members to have some discussion on the transportation, uh, to Louisville for our students. I think y'all have been very generous and, uh, we'll get some numbers from, uh, Ms. Taylor and Katie, uh, later on. How did they, how y'all felt about it?
I would think that the board would continue to support as we have done traditionally. I think the support is there unless someone disagrees.
I'll have some numbers for you, uh, for the next couple of weeks. That's all I have here.
All right. I am seven point oh one, adjourned to close meeting.
The board were adjourned to close meeting as allowed by section two.